Good evening, everyone. This is the July 13, 2022 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody, and a special welcome to Nils Peterson, who's going to be talking with us here in just a little bit about affordable housing. So also, you might notice we've gone back to our pre-COVID seating arrangements for meetings when we don't have public hearings. So we'll try to do it this way here from when we have the opportunity. So first item of business, approval of the June 8 meeting. Yes, we didn't have a meeting last time. So the last meeting that we have minutes for, June 8. So any additions, deletions, corrections? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay. So we got Dennis's motion and Rich's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions?
I'll abstain since I was abstained.
Okay. Next item is public comment period. We see nobody in the audience, so we'll move on past that. If anybody is watching, I don't know. We certainly would welcome your attendance and come and address us during our meetings. So, all right, Nils, you are up. Discussion on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Great, thank you. So I've got several things here. I guess we're going to start with understanding some of the existing zoning code and how it is working. This is the development we did on Southview Avenue. And you see the one lot there that has three addresses jammed into it. Housing Trust bought that lot. And with engineering costs and lot division and legal costs, it was $78,000 for the whole thing. So then divide by three, that's what, $26,000 a lot for a three unit townhome. And if you drive, that's what you'll see there now. Actually, it looks better because the folks have sort of taken ownership and started to really landscape the front yards. But we got a three unit townhouse. And that all worked by rook. Had a little bit of conversation with the developer owner about CCNRs, but we were able to come to enough of an agreement about it that my deviation from the CCNRs was not, he was willing to accept that. So how to make it more affordable? And what I've learned over a while now is do the opposite of what the market values. This drives my realtor absolutely bonkers. Make it smaller. Common walls hurt the market value of a house. I mean, it's still 1,300 square feet, but it touches something and that costs you value. For me, I go, oh, what a deal. How many common walls can I have? Because those sort of things do reduce, they reduce the lot size and they reduce the value of the property all over. Omitting a garage, if you can, CCNRs may drive you the other way. Just one bath. All of these things are kind of going against what people think the house should be. You know, it should be three, two with a two car garage and blah, blah, blah. And now you're at 1,800 square feet gross of everything or something. Anyway, so the challenge can be that these moves go against the CCNRs in the neighborhood. The developer has put out a set of rules, which is why we're going to look in the next that I simply bought a big block and some of you were here when I plotted it to avoid buying individual lot and getting the baggage that came with that.
And this is in a subdivision that has CCNRs?
So this, oops, oops. This is in a subdivision of CCNRs. And I was able to negotiate what I needed. Those three lots, 328, mine, and 406 are zoned R3. Everything to the right up the street is zoned R2. And the developer was willing to be more flexible on those three that are zoned R3. So that helped me make it work. If you want to buy 328, it's a challenging hillside lot. I've got a concept for it, but it's not going to be affordable. That's the problem. So those choices that do the opposite of what the market values may make the project lose money. And which is why most developers can't build this, the kind of affordable housing. The word affordable is used a variety of ways. And let me talk about how I use it. But the issue is that as you make it smaller, as you do things that hurt its market value like the common walls or omitting the garage, the fixed costs, as a percentage of the project and value, go up. The sewer costs you exactly the same. The building permit costs you within, you know, hundreds of dollars, exactly the same. Yet the sales price didn't stay up. The sales price came down, which for me, I say that's good, but it doesn't work, the math doesn't work. And you end up with higher square foot costs as you do it. When I say affordable, I start from a target demographic. Many of the sources of money that I can get, say 80% of area median income. And HUD tells me what that number is annually, and they make it as complicated as they can. Here's what I can remember. A single person household, $44,000 a year is the 80% threshold. And a four person household, it's about $63,000. It's moved up from when I started. Inflation and whatnot has driven it up. So a four person household with a gross income of $63,000 would be my target demographic. Then I sort of do the math of saying, okay, affordable, the federal definition is 30% of gross income being spent on housing. Okay, what's your income? What's 30%? Divide by 12. Now work backwards through a mortgage calculator from payment to loan. That's the sales price, which is not the way you're doing it. Because you're trying to make it work from my costs and I need to recover my costs to make it work as a business. We're going to see that I just, I live upside down. So I use a different definition of affordable than when we hear local developers talk about making something affordable. They're talking, honestly, trying to make it less expensive, doing some of these things to some extent, but not then just say, well, what price should it have? It should have this price in order to meet my definition of affordable. And that's what we'll see here. Oh, the other thing I want to talk about, how we can make this work, not just being a nonprofit, but we use a different ownership model. We're separating the land from the improvements. We sell the improvements and we lease the land to the house. It's a 99 year lease. Our lease rate is $75 a month. Some people say when I sort of tell this story, oh, it's like a mobile home park. Well, yeah, except the mobile home park, that's personal property and that parking space is $400 a month. If we charged more than 75, it wouldn't be affordable. So my accountant says, well, that's a terrible return. You've got a $40,000 investment and you're getting $75 a month on it. Yeah, okay. That's what you think. It's a terrible investment. I think the community is getting a good value. So again, I just work in a different sort of economics than a profit driven one. So this kind of model where you separate the improvements from the land, lease the land back to the improvements. Fannie Mae has made rules for how I do it such that the loans will sell in the secondary market. That's the other feedback I get. Oh, nobody alone on that. Well, actually, they all, Ridge Financial did the third of those three loans. It's like, okay, are you following all of Fannie Mae's rules? I say, yes, check me. And they say, okay, we can do that. There's three key things to think about in the lease. The buyer must live in the house. They can't move out and make it into a rental. Because that's not the community's goal. The community's goal is to create a house for a family to live in, not for a house, to create a rental property for a family to own. They must sell to another income qualified buyer. In other words, we want to keep it in the hands of the demographic that we're trying to help. And the way we make that happen is number three. The maximum sales price is set by a formula. We take them out of the speculative real estate market. So you bought it, in the case of those Southview houses, they bought it for $159 each when they were appraised at 205. Again, that's me and the affordability. I said it needs to cost 159. Those houses inflated in value 2%. When they go to sell, that's the maximum that they can ask. I'm sure they'll get the maximum in our current market. But the point is, we think wages will inflate at 2% a year. That's what we're hoping. Such that the buyer, five years from now, who's in the 80% AMI demographic, is still able to buy the house because it hasn't inflated out of their reach. So I just keep saying, the community's goal here, what is the community land trust? The community's goal is to, house remains affordable to the target demographic for 99 years. And we need to try to manage things for that to happen and help the owner make the house viable, put on a new roof, paint the siding, you know, whatever it is, so that the house is a valuable resource. Maybe it won't make it for 99 years, but we want it to last a long time, right?
Who oversees this? The, our commission? Who oversees that these things will happen?
The Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. Our job relative to those three houses, we call stewardship. And that really takes the form of, happens to be, I drive by it regularly to kind of just put an eyeball on it, but a relationship with our buyers, not to be an opposing relationship, but hey, how's it going? My counterparts with larger portfolios, when the COVID lockdown, they started calling each one of their owners. You still got work? You're going to be able to make your mortgage payment? What it is, what can we do to make you a successful homeowner as the trust? Because the trust doesn't want it to fall, that buyer to fall apart. They don't want to get into foreclosure. That would be a mess for everybody. So conserving that asset is what my job becomes.
Yeah, that's pretty interesting. And you don't need to answer this now, but I'd be curious to have you just discuss how that relates to Habitat and their world. I'm just intrigued with how different habitats approach is to what you're doing.
I'll only comment a little in that I would write Jennifer, their director, that's it. Each of the issues that I address, they address. Many of the issues, they address differently than I address. But we each have a subsidy. We each have a target demographic. We each have a financing model. Habitat as a generic statement does a variety of things. Some of the habitats do the community land trust model. So they do what I do and they do what, some of them, our current chapter or our local chapter has been selling the houses fee simple. And they've been using financing mechanisms to create a mortgage that the buyer pays on and capture the rest of the value in a silent second mortgage. So we're each working the same problem and we just use different mechanisms to try to do it. The thing that I think Moscow Affordable Housing Trust did three houses that we sold fee simple. They were affordable to buyer number one. One of them has already sold and it sold at market rate. And it is no longer an affordable house. And all the community's investment that went into making that house affordable is now in the pocket of buyer number one. Which is great for buyer number one, but it is not great for the community.
But it isn't, you might use the word sustainable.
I can't find enough subsidy to make enough houses for one time owners to make it work.
And you may come back to this too. On, you were talking about the valuation. How does that affect you when the county comes back in and is starting to increase the valuation, particularly with the way housing has gone up in the market?
The taxes is a great question, right? Taxes is a great question. So here's how that works. There are two owners, me, the housing trust, and the homeowner. And you know, on your tax bill, you see improvements in land. What the homeowner sees is only improvements. And what I see is land. Except that Idaho Code says that 501(c)(3) organizations are entitled, it's not a mother may I, it's are entitled if they meet the criteria to have their taxes waived. So annually, I send in the paperwork, at this point, 20 copies of the paperwork for 20 lots that I own, to the county commissioners to have them acknowledge that we still meet their criteria and we should not be taxed. So the tax bill that if you owned it fee simple, you would see both halves or two thirds, one third, or whatever it is, right? The land piece is a freebie. So I thank all of you who are paying property tax because all of your taxes went up by just a whisker to make my land be free. Okay? On the improvements, the homeowner's exemption still applies. So there's the improvements, less the homeowner's exemption formula. But your question was also about the appreciation. After several conversations in the courthouse, I said, the maximum this appreciates is 2% a year. Here's the contract. So their tax bill year one was 159,000 less homeowner's exemption. And year two is 159 plus 2% less homeowner's exemption. So the tax burden for our buyer is significantly lower by those two mechanisms. Take out the land and cap the price.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I don't know if this is worth answering, but what happens to an owner in one of these cases that maybe the owner was, for different reasons, unable to cope with market life? And then all of a sudden, a new job and new change happened, boom, and all of a sudden, instead of making 18,000 a year, they were making, you know, 60,000 for some reason? Is that of any interest at all?
I say congratulations. I expect they're going to say, you know, I could afford another house.
One would presume.
But if they want to stay, the deal was written when they bought it and they can stay. If they decide to sell, obviously, the rules for the sale will govern. What I understand, again, from my counterparts, is these tend to be starter homes. And somebody gets in, they stabilize their housing cost, inflation goes up and their housing cost doesn't. Their house appreciates at 2% a year. After a few years, they sell and they now have enough for a down payment in the regular market. Because to get in, I didn't say this, to get in is $500. That's what you need down, not 3%. And here's how that works. This is the magic of Fannie Mae. What the lender wants to see is that the appraised value and the purchase price, that the purchase price is less than 80%. That might be on the next slide. Yeah, there it is, with sales price 159. So I'll walk through the whole slide, we'll get back to that. So the land cost, I already told you, was 78,000 for three lots, so 26,000 a house. The construction cost was 195 and I got a 1,300 square foot, three bed, one and a half bath house. My total investment, the total of those two numbers, is 221,000. Fair market value, the appraisal in 2020, was 205. So you can see, I succeeded in doing things the market didn't like. And I made a house that was worth less than it cost to build, which I celebrate. And most developers would not, right? I'm upside down there. Then I picked the sales price of 159. 159 is 77% of 205. The lender says, oh, we are going to call the land in this transaction, the down payment. And you are now below 80%. You don't need private mortgage insurance. Go, because that's another $75 a month or something that compromises your buying power because it's part of your payment. So by being less, by having that 20% down, that the community is providing my buyer, in effect, by these, they are able to leverage their payment that much further. So then the subsidies, and I forgot one on here when I was making it. Idaho Housing Finance, I'm using federal money called HOM, it's a home partnership program. They were my construction lender. And when I paid it off, they said, you don't have to pay off the last 40,000 of what you borrowed. We will leave that as a note against me, not against the homeowner, for 10 years. And if you stay a nice person, in 10 years, we'll forgive it. City of Moscow, in 2019, the council gave me 15,000 for this project. So there's 5,000 of real city cash money in there. There's another program that I didn't get listed on the screen, SHOP, Self Help Ownership Program. It's another HUD program. They will pay for land and infrastructure, but not anything above the ground. It looks on my books like a loan. In 10 years, it will be forgiven. All of that essentially accrues on my balance sheet, not on my homeowner's balance sheet. So the community's holding on to the asset, which is why we call ourselves a trust. We are growing a pool of asset for the community. My balance sheet looks a little bit wacky. I've got huge amounts of debt right now and lots of assets. And will ultimately become just assets when these things get forgiven. So anyway, so that's how the money works. And you see how upside down I am and that I'm actually happy to be that way. But I'm happy to be that way because community resources are going in. It's real money. It all has to balance at some point. It just doesn't have to balance on the hide of the buyer. That's the, that's how we make it affordable. Okay, so that's example of the land trust at work and the numbers from the Southview project. Now, this is why Nels wanted me to come here.
The land trust, when was it created?
It was incorporated in 2009. And as a working board, they tried to do several things. And in 2014, Carl Johnson, who says, come to a board meeting, we're going to hire you. So it's like, okay, whatever. I had retired from WSU and my wife thought I was kicking around the house. So this was a perfect solution. They don't pay me enough to buy a house from the housing trust. But that's, I'm having fun.
I haven't paid close attention. I knew you were.
Right, so I've been in the job seven plus years. So this is 2022, so last year, the 2021, 22 school year. The year before, the 2019, 2020 school year, I got approached by Scott Lawrence at Architecture at U of I, who's running the design build program. Would you work with our students, design a house? And I agreed that would be fun to do. And this was 20, 2020, 2021. So it was in the middle of COVID. I'm scrambling to be sure I have enough money to make this, their project work. I'd pick doing a twin home because my site is plotted for twin homes. And they come back and say, we're going to design it, but we're not going to build it. And I think that was internal COVID related health and safety kind of stuff that the university was working its way through, which is fine. Turned out to be absolutely great. So I said to the students, it's 1,300 square feet, it's one car garage, it's one, one and a half baths, three beds. It was a hillside site, it was a good challenge for students. The lesson we learned as instructors, and I class myself as sort of part of, owner is my official title when I go into class, or developer. But actually, the collaboration with the folks teaching is great. And as, I have some sort of an instructor role as a trained architect myself. Anyway, I said 1,300 square feet. They said 1,300 square feet back. I meant gross. They were answering net. So they designed a nice twin home. In fact, it was two teams, they designed two different homes that had a common wall. But they were each about 1,600 square feet. You may recall that lumber prices went.
Architects aren't that good at math.
Architects are not that good at math. I've got a solution for that. You may recall that materials prices went absolutely nuts. So I went to my, the contractor that I wanted to use, and I said, just put a rough number on this project the students designed. It was $180,000 above my budget. It's like, I'm not going to even try to skimp on something here. This is a dead proposal. But here's what we learned. So Mark Engberg is the project architect and it shifted to being Randy Teal as the instructor of record.
Randy Teal, for those of you, is head of the architecture program at the university. And this guy Scott Lawrence that he talked about would be a professor working with him.
Right, right. And Scott was great to work with in that first one, though again, Mark was really the architect of record and practically the instructor. The faculty kind of popped in and out. So what I said to Mark is, we So what I said to Mark is, we can't let them cheat on us again. And his proposal was, let me design a small house, not a twin home. We, we looked at the logistics of students building a twin home. They weren't gonna learn twice as much by building two homes as building one. Says, let's go to a, a detached house. Let me design, and then I'm gonna erase everything and tell them what the foundation plan is. And I said, perfect, cuz I will know at all times, it's five hundred and fifty square feet. Because that's how big the foundation is. If we don't allow them to cantilever out over the edges, we know exactly how big the house is at all times. Without having to argue about it. So that's what we did. Mark designed a house, he erased the design and kept the foundation. And we handed that to the students last fall. And they had a wonderfully difficult time figuring out where the bathroom, the bedroom and the living room were in Mark's foundation. All good education. This has been a wonderful educational experience. Anyway, so they ended up with the design, the, the rendering you see on the left. And I took that photo for you of the building is now a week or a week and a half old. Give you an idea that, where they are.
And the students, by the way, are, they, they could be men or they could be women. And so there's no, it's exciting to go out there and see young ladies in hard hats pounding nails. It's, it's pretty.
There, there's three women and one man on this, this class. And they're getting ready to recruit for the next year. Cuz we're, we're trying to do this for six years running. So let's get back to the uh, P and Z side of all of this. You may recall, some of you have been here, when I came in with that plat. That site is platted for sixteen twin homes. And in the upper left, that piano shape is a single family lot. The, when the conversation got going with the U of I, it was, and it was gonna be a single family house. It was like, okay, we're gonna throw out all the twin home lots. That's the flattest, best or easiest part of the site in that oval. And on the right is the site plan that we came up with. So there's six lots, there's six houses, but the houses straddle the lot lines all over the place. This is relatively easy for me. We've done a lot tie agreement, is that the term, Mike?
Yeah.
Because, so I'm building, in the lower right, it says four forty two. That's the house that's being built right now. And it straddles lots nine and ten on the site. A lot tie agreement allows me to build across those, that, that internal property line. And then the house to the north of it is next year's project. And we're gonna just kind of from south to north, then over one to the west, on the south, and it's just a zigzag pattern. They wanted a commitment to do this for six years. Will be enough momentum building to really launch a design build program that can work at the scale of houses. They, they've done interesting projects. One World Cafe got a real nice makeover. But that was a sort of a different design experience, different set of lessons to be learned than, than actually doing a whole house. So the reason I say this is not too difficult for me is I own all the land and I will always own all the land. So houses that are not on lots is something for my lawyer to worry about. But it isn't, it isn't a zoning. Normally, we say there's a house on a lot and it has to face a, you know, da, 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 all of those rules. I have, it's R four zone, I own everything underneath it. So I've got a lot more latitude to, to do this than I would otherwise given Moscow's current zoning code.
So your semi-public spaces, you retain the maintenance for those as well? Sidewalks, landscaping?
I am gonna try to not, but I've gone.
And where does the liability fall?
Where does the liability fall?
Different people are walking on it.
We're going to create a condo association. And in other words, create another entity to handle a bunch of those layers so that the housing trust isn't the immediate partner in all that.
So if it's a condo association, how, how will the fee structure work for affordable housing?
So there, there's more than one wrinkle in a land trust participating in a condo. The Habitat affiliate in Portle Lane is further down the road than I am on this. They're building an apartment building that's gonna be a condo. That more typical condo, really. And they are sorting out how they maintain their land ownership interests. Mostly how they control the sale price. Because that's what the land trust is really trying to do in the condo context. And so they've spent a lot of money on lawyers and they've shared that with me so that I spend less money on my lawyers. We hope, knock on wood. But what I expect we'll end up with is a condo association that the housing trust has some say so in the changing of the bylaws. Such that we'll write the bylaws we want. And we won't allow the owners to change the bylaws in ways that we don't like. Which would be that they would change the bylaws to excuse themselves from the cap on the sale price or selling to another or renting, this is my three big things. We would wanna prevent that because that would work against the community's interest.
Who pays the fee then? The owner?
Owner would pay the fee to the condo organization. And then it isn't clear if that's the land rent, that then that pays to me. I, I'm waiting for all the lawyers to sort out all the layers of all of this. It's done. Community land trusts own condos in other states. So it's only a question of doing it under the rules of the Idaho law.
I, I guess, and I don't know if this is true, what you were driving at. When you start adding in homeowners fees or association fees, you're also affecting the affordability.
Correct.
Side of this.
Correct, that, that is, that is a potential risk. So what I'm.
Think a risk too, like, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, but like, the thing I think about is like, I'm an advocate of like pocket neighborhoods. Really, this might be considered something close to that for the area. But where infrastructure comes in, like water, if you have something wrong connecting to the site, like, how is that addressed? And I know that's gonna fall under the condo association, but then that's gonna tear up a lot of the public space, right? And so, if, if, over time, right? Like ideally, that would never happen, but like, we don't live in a world with those factors at all. And so I, I, I have a hard time seeing how that would, how that would work. And I know it's, we're, we're, you know, we're working through it, I think it's good, but there, there, I can see some, you know. I think how you guys are doing with Mark and Randy is really, it's a, it's a good way. But how, how utilities are brought in and maintained even over forty five years is, you know, i- i- it could, it's something that I think consider.
Right, thank you. I, I, I think that's a good point. The, the, the forty five year timeframe of the sewer line and the water line and I'm less worried about shoveling the sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's solvable in a fairly straightforward way.
Right, right. And then, I know, I know it sounds like you're, you know, kind of scratching the surface on this. But for maintenance of those, you know, sidewalks, you know, who's gonna mow the lawn? You know, if you throw salt down or a tenant throws certain amount, eats away the sidewalk in fifteen years, what, what are the, who, who's in charge of taking care of that, right? Because if I'm, if I'm at thirty percent of like my income for this, how, how, you know, I'm curious to see, I, I'm sure there's a solution. But how, how does that work out in an affordable housing context?
Right. I, I think those are, those are great questions. And I start by saying, I know that it is being done. It's being done in Portland, it's being done in Seattle. It's a learning for us. But I, I don't start by saying I have to absolutely invent everything. I have to invent the Idaho version of it, perhaps, but I don't have to invent all of it. It, it is being done.
So, talk to us just a little bit in general. Forget the rest of the big world out there in the east. But talk to us about the success and value that is provided in states that we can relate to. You know, how are, is this, is this like even in Boise and Southern Idaho, are people doing these same things?
So my counterpart in Boise is called LEAP Housing, L E A P. And LEAP has its first small community land trust development sold. And they're working on other projects. They are doing both ownership and multifamily. So they're working, I'm strictly trying to do ownership models.
I see.
My counterpart in Ketchum is a very mature land trust. They've been doing it, I think, acting as a land trust for fifteen years or so.
Yeah, they've been forced, though the retirement or recreation communities have been under the gun for a long time.
Right, they, they've had the problem.
Their view of low income significantly.
Their view is, is, is a view that I share, which is the workforce. That is, who is making the cappuccino downtown Ketchum? That's the person that needs to live.
Living in Twin Falls.
And living in Twin Falls and driving an hour and a half to make lat- lattes.
Probably living in Shoshone, not Twin Falls.
Right, that's thirty miles closer.
Yeah, thirty miles closer.
But, but, but so they have faced this problem. McCall is wrestling with this problem. That the people that McCall needs to make McCall go can't afford to live in McCall.
What I call, my son lives in one of those, you know, and I call them the slave culture. You know, those, they're high, highly paid. These are slaves that make seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year. Because the guy next door to you is a multimillionaire, you know? It's a, it's a, it's a skewed world. But at least you're saying that the, some of the legal things are the same things that you'll face.
Right, right. The Ketchum is partnering with the Wood River School District because the Wood River School District can't attract teachers. Because they can't, it's back to they have to live in Shoshone and drive to school sort of thing. And the school district somehow had a bunch of land. And so there's now, they're creating a land trust where the district apparently is gonna own the underlying land. The land trust is gonna lease that land from the district, if I understand it right. And bring in a developer to build multifamily, small, I think they're fourplexes, not really apartment buildings. Which will be rented to, with a priority, to district employees. And I think first responders, I think they're trying to broaden that net a little bit. I've gotten calls from city council in Riggins. Riggins is a bedroom community to McCall. And it's squeezing out the people who work in Riggins. And the, the grocery stores, you go south through there, there's a grocery store on the right. He bought an apartment building. The owner of the grocery store bought the apartment building in order to rent the apartment to his employees. So, and, and as I understand it, there are two teachers in the district who are homeless.
Wow.
Shocking, but not surprising, is what my counterpart in, in Ketchum said. When she, oh, yeah, okay. By homeless, they're not under a bridge. They're in an RV, somewhere up along the river or somewhere that, you know, we, we see all these encampments of RVs along there. And.
Well, let's hear it from capitalism, God.
Anyway, so I'm having conversations with Riggins. What can we learn from Ketchum? And can Riggins emulate some of those things?
If you get a chance to travel, I, I would highly recommend Park City as somebody to talk to.
Oh, okay.
Park City is exceedingly liberal for a Utah place. And they've just done some, I don't know the details of it, but my son has, has shown me several of their housing developments that wouldn't look unlike these. Little houses built for, you know, the, the baristas and blah, 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 all those folks. But they're, I think they've been pretty creative, but I, I could be wrong. But it might be worth a, a trip. Because I, I, I think Sun Valley is quite a lot different than Park City. Park City is different because it's so interlaced with Salt Lake City. So it's, it's not that standalone thing out there in the mountains. It's really, you know, it's Park City, you can, you're only eighteen and a half minutes to to Salt Lake if you drive eighty.
So returning to the sort of planning and zoning stuff. Oh, so this, this slide, so our collaboration, we need a condo to describe the land associated with the house. It's gonna create a new legal entity. Ground lease is gonna be in there with those key three rules. There is no federal money in the portion of this project where the U of I is working. And I've been very diligent to keep Idaho Housing Finance Association and home money and shop money out. Because I don't want any more rules coming in than I have to. Idaho Housing seems to want every house tied to a lot. And that the ground lease is really the lot, a legal lot to connect to the house.
Well, condo world isn't really part of Idaho's.
Right.
That isn't us. California is all about condo.
When I said condo, the people in Boise got very quiet. And I've been trying to get them to, and I've decided there's, they're not gonna get on board.
In my day, when I was back and forth in Boise all the time, and I would start using the word condo, they would sort of say apartment is the word.
Apartment is the word. No, that's the format. Okay, so. I stumbled across an article in the magazine Dwell, or the online thing called Dwell, that is zoning changes that are going on in Portland. And I sent it to Mike and said, hey, I wanna come down to P and Z and talk about this. With the hopes that you might decide. Um, with the hopes that you might decide to think about it a bit as professional learning or to task staff to do further research. There were four ideas in this article. And the first is that twin homes, and this is a three unit, can be turned sideways and the lot divisions are that they're, they're, they're not, when we do it, every house has a lot that faces, that touches the street. This model, there are lots that don't touch the street. And they seem to not be doing it with panhandle lots. At least if we try to do it with panhandle lots, the panhandles would eat up so much of the real estate very quickly that it, it would be difficult to do unless the lot was fairly wide. So they're calling them small plexes. And they're turning what we would call a twin house or a townhouse sideways on the lot. It's still allowing the ownership of, because there are somehow lots being created. This one is closer to what I'm trying to do, the U of I project. Sell the backyard of your current house to somebody else who comes in and builds a house in your backyard, owning the land. So not affordable, but just.
We've kept, we looked over the wall with an, uh, auxiliary.
ADUs.
ADUs.
Right.
We kinda peeked at it.
We peeked at it, except we don't allow the ADU to not be owned by the main house. They've, they've gone, they've gone the next piece, which is two owners on the lot, or in this case, it looks like three. Here's a local, this, this is a picture of a house that is in the article. And either it's a tear down or because it's got a deep backyard, you could build a second house in the backyard. That's a house on Eighth Street in Moscow. It was a little bitty house. And the owners built, you can sort of see in the back, a two-story, very addition. So it's still a single-family house. They had a deep backyard, they built that, and they sold it for four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That wasn't, that became an unaffordable house. Whereas the small house, plus selling the back of the lot and building another small house, could have produced two much less expensive houses. So we, we have encountered the thing that Portland is trying to avoid i- in that blue house example, that if, if we had some other zoning tools, they might have done something different. The third thing that Portland's doing is they're allowing up to four units on a lot could be attached or detached, and up to six units if they meet certain affordability criteria. So that townhouse turns sideways down the lot. It looks like it's on a corner lot, but they say it can be done in the middle of the block.
And that's in Seattle?
Portland.
Oh, Portland.
Portland zoning code. Nowhere in this dwell article does it say the word parking. And how they're resolving that, they, they think this is gonna happen in the old streetcar neighborhoods. So perhaps they think transit is good enough, they're just not gonna worry too much about parking. Um, but obviously that would be one of the bugaboo's that you would have to wrestle with, as you thought about.
But if you get to Portland and Seattle, there's a possibility of living without a car.
Uh huh.
Which, which wouldn't be something that we've seen, we wouldn't see that in Idaho for quite a.
Quite a, right, which would make some of these have a, a challenge given the need to think about what, what level of parking are we gonna require on site? Are we gonna allow the streetfront to counter some of the parking? Various ways, but to say all six of those people are living without a car in Moscow is probably not credible.
Yeah, we tried that once.
I voted for doing that. I'm here, I'm with you. So this is the fourth thing that, that, um, Portland is created. This is not a Portland project, I'm pretty sure of it. Um, but is to create the potential in the zoning code for cluster housing. It, what was not clear in the article is whether there's a P U D required or whether the ownership is a condo, or whether it's fee simple ownership of lots that don't have street fronts. But they're, they're clearly trying to do things in their zoning code to allow the cluster kind of concept to happen.
Is the cluster concepts, uh, in, in this context of dwell, are they saying that there's, uh, the city is owning some of these semi-public spaces?
I don't know that. The, the article is, is thin.
I don't see that.
So, Nils, there, I've been reading a, a rather interesting and somewhat controversial idea that kind of plays into this, and I don't know if you're gonna get to this particular piece of it. But in Arlington, Virginia, um, there is a proposal that would allow, um, well, in, in one part of it, in a zoning. But it would allow, in what's the equivalent of an R one zone, um, twin home or townhouses. And I thought, yeah, again, I'm not advocating this, but it can be a part of discussion about how we deal with zoning and allowing. I, for example, across the street from your place, a house just got torn down. I don't know what's going in there, but, you know, what, what would be wrong with having a townhouse? If it was done in an architecturally appropriate way? So I, I don't know if that's the kind of thing that people, and that we may end up having to, to think about. I, I, I can't imagine that Moscow would go for doing away with an R one zone. But is there a possibility that you could allow something else to be built in an R one? So, so anyway, I, this kind of thing, I think.
Or maybe as an overlay where, let's take that example, right? Third Street is a transit route. And looking at the map of the city, Third Street will always be a transit route. It's a good bikeable route, it's reasonably close to downtown. Could the half-block on either side of Third Street have some other overlaid rules on top of whatever? There's some R three and there's some R two, whatever scattered around in there. But yes, you can add another dwelling because you're in this special spot. Parking bugaboo, you know, has to be solved, but.
Issues, yeah.
Right, but maybe we could think about, can we get a little bit more missing middle kind of housing in certain places? The texture of that whole neighborhood from here out to Nils's house is so complicated already. There are so many things in there that saying, yeah, we can allow a little bit more texture, probably. I mean, I go looking, where's the R four and where's the R three? If you're on, if you got a map, you can find it. But if you're walking around, it's kinda hard to figure out where the line might be. Maybe we just kind of celebrate that and allow a little bit more of it to have the potential of happening.
Well, the apartments, you know, behind, uh, my house have always been a, an interesting, um, conundrum for, I mean, there's a hunk of R four right there and, and the, as it turns out, hasn't, uh, hasn't affected our life. That's been one of the reasons I've been, so I can be verified on P and Z because I'm always saying, well, I have to look at apartments every day. And I didn't die and my son actually graduated from high school. Can you imagine that?
Well, that, that particular R four mix is in such a great location because it's walking distance from Lena, the middle school and high school.
Yeah, reading.
I have lots of friends who grew up there, and that's done a lot.
There's a lot of, there is a, an incredible, uh, a very similar place in Boise in the North End. There was just this same thing, except a developer.
Huh? I said, don't talk about the North End.
The, the developer took these quantities, these wartime things and fixed them up. And, um, added, all of a sudden, they became, uh, desirable places rather than the sort of white Harlem that we've managed to, uh, associate. But once again, the owner, in our case here in Moscow, I mean, you're showing this desire to nurture the things that you're building. And the owner of our white Harlem gave out nurturing quite a few years ago. So that, that's the only thing that hurts, uh, in, in my mind. And so that mixture is really, uh, it's really useful, actually, I, I think.
I didn't mean to get you off track on your, your thing.
No, no, uh, that's great. So I think, I think that's, yeah, that's it. I really appreciate you letting me come down here and share all this and.
That's kinda like old home week. I used to sit right here.
Yeah.
So I, I did have a question, um, about this lot tie-in. Mike, could you talk a little bit about, uh, does that create an issue for, for planning? That, where Nils is building across lot lines?
We've always allowed that, so it comes back to our definition of a lot within the subdivision. Zoning code pretty much says that, you know, as long as it's under common ownership, no matter how many lots, you know, as long as the time of development, that you're saying that this is gonna be the developable area you could take. I mean, that's how traditionally we've done it, you know, in downtown, there's twenty-foot wide lots. And that's what you've traditionally done over the years is that, you know, I'm gonna build a house and it's gonna take four twenty-foot wide lots, and that's essentially gonna become my lot.
Okay.
Although it may be four subdivision, you know, four lots within a subdivision.
Okay.
Um, and then we've just, over the years, in order to track that better, gone through a lot tie agreement and recorded that against the property.
So as long as Nils owns them, then there's, okay.
Right, and, and signed a legal agreement to tie them together.
Right.
Well, he's going kinda two at a time.
I've only tied, right, pairs of houses will straddle a line, and so I'll just do them two at a time, I think.
So, you know, the, the option is certainly the, to kind of minimize them. But the other option is to go through a P U D and, you know, if you're looking at fee simple ownership. I mean, we've done a few of those, like Folkstone on White Avenue, Mark Pico's development, they're close to the roundabout. Um, you know, those certain number of those lots don't have frontage on a street right of way. And that's really what it comes down to is that every, we require every lot to have some type of frontage on a street right of way. And you need to go through a P U D in order to get around that. And that's kind of what Nils was referring to in these examples of maybe thinking, thinking about that a little bit differently. And, and a lot of it comes down to fire code, you know, access.
Right.
I mean, they have to have some type of provision there, that there be some legal access across the parcel in front of the other one to provide, you know, access and legal access into the future as well as fire code requirements, being able to, to respond to some sort of emergency back.
Couldn't have been done with a P U D though?
It could have, except that P U D, they want you to show all of the floor plans and facades of the units. There are five of them that are undesigned intentionally. Which is wonderful for the students.
Right.
But, you know, it's just a headache that I'm solving in the background for them.
Yeah, I mean, you can still leave it, we, we've had a couple recently where they left it semi-general as far as, you know, what the, the designs would be, so certainly we could work with you on that.
Okay.
State code, that's a state requirement for beauty.
It's in our city code.
So before we wrap up, anybody got additional questions for Nils or?
When all is said and done, do you feel this, your efforts, and let's co-mingle Habitat in your efforts both? These are both wonderful activities, which, you know, I happen to have a couple of friends that are with Rotary that are working with Habitat as well, and, and they, you know, they just go nuts over it by the hour. But will it really have any effect? I mean, it's, it's nice, but will it come, will the activities that we've invented have, uh, come close to solving the problem that we think we might have? As in terms of, of homelessness?
Well, homelessness is one end of the spectrum of problems, right?
I just, I'm shocked at how little an average person, which I do consider myself, I, I know so little about the, what's going on in my town. You know, in terms of who is homeless or who doesn't have the ability. And I just, an apocryphal story, I, we had an exchange student years ago, back in nineteen ninety, and she was from Norway, but she was a bit of a wild hair and got herself tangled up with all the interesting young people in Moscow High. And the next thing you know, I'm meeting of young students who are living in strange places and didn't have homes. And, uh, I, I was, I was actually in shock. And we'd say, well, bring your friends over, we'll have a birthday party. And she'd bring all these kids to our house that didn't have a place to live. And I, and I was just like stunned. I'm thinking like, what am I missing? I'm driving around town with my eyes closed apparently and don't see what our problem is. And I'm asking you whether you think you know what the problem is and whether what you're doing, while it's honorable, will it help solve the problem?
So I think the problem comes in a bunch of slices. And there's the sort of the absolutely homeless. There's the couch surfing college student who, yeah, technically they're homeless, but maybe it's actually not a bad.
Not a bad life.
Casual life, right, right. And then there's people in rental situations, and we could start thinking about syringa as failed facilities, or up to reasonable ones. But then are they paying an affordable price or are they cost burdened? I think we see a lot of people struggling with food and medical and dental and all of those issues. And I say, you know why? Because they, the risk of becoming homeless, the penalty for becoming homeless is so high. When I, my office, when I first got hired, was out at Sojourner's because Steve was the board treasurer, and he says, I'll give you an office out here, you work out. I learned so much being at Sojourner's, just keeping my door opening and listening. And, and what I came to understand is that if you lose your housing, you lose most of all of your possessions. You can't get your bed into the car, you can't get your dresser into the car. So you take the core, most valuable things in your car if you have a car, and if you don't, you essentially lose it all. So you don't wanna lose your housing. So pay too much for housing and try to live on peanut butter and oatmeal. Skip buying meds, skip going to the doc, skip your dental work in order that you have enough money to not become homeless. And I think there's a bunch of that problem in varying degrees in our communities that you don't necessarily see. I mean, they're people and they go to places that look like houses and I'm not working in all of that piece of the market. Real problems and real issues. My board is focused on ownership for the workforce folks in the community. Understanding that here are people who may have a full-time job, that job may have benefits. They may have a good credit score, they can go to the bank, they can get a loan, and they can borrow a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They open up the newspaper and say you can't buy anything with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If they could, many of us at the table here are homeowners, I'm guessing. And we understand that it puts you on a wealth-building escalator if you can buy house one. And so that's the piece. And so that's the piece, there's lots of rental provided in the town, maybe more or less successful, whatever. But my board says, we want to work on ownership for the workforce of the community.
Good point.
Now, you're still asking the right question. Am I impactful enough? And my answer is no. I need to build houses much faster. And you'll recall in my Southview example, the magnitude of subsidy that I had to raise to put in. I can't build houses faster if I'm having to find that magnitude of subsidy for every house. Which is the, my experience, experiment here with these small houses is to say, how close can I get to the homeowner paying for the house and me only paying for the land and no other subsidy? It's not a freebie yet, but if I can understand that and how close I can get, there may be the ability to turn the crank faster because I don't have to raise as much subsidy.
Fascinating.
And, and so, you know, I, there's 17 lots. I'm hoping the U of I builds it six over six years, and I get the other 11 done in the next three years. And get out of that site and start on another site. Because we've averaged rough COVID, give me a break on at least one year of COVID, house a year. That's not impactful in my mind.
So I think what we'd like to do is have you come back in about a year. And give us, no, seriously, I, I, no, I'd like to see an update on how this is going. I mean, I think it's important and we can include some additional discussions on the kind of things planning and zoning can do to, to, to be, I guess, a catalyst for helping your kind of projects out. So anyway, I just, I want to extend an invitation. I'll work with Mike, we'll find some time, and I would love to get an update.
I'd be delighted to come back. I'll, I'll, I'll remember, try to remember to invite Mike to the open house that that will have. There will be, you know, guys cutting ribbons for this thing because it's a university project. But when I come back, the dust will be settled and I'll bring you the numbers.
Okay.
I'll tell you how, how the money really worked. Because that, for, this is so great, so much learning is going on here. And so many people are helping with that learning. My learning is the money. The students nominally built the budget, but, you know. I'll tell you, one observation that, that will, Nils will grasp this. They had their plans, their plans have been approved by the building department, they're out there on the site, they had the deck finished, and they're going to start to raise the walls. They look at the plans, one of the dimensions is 18 foot 1 inch. There was a learning. But more importantly, CAD systems seem to be willing to let you measure from center of thing to center of thing. Or from face of foundation down under the deck to... And they're up there going, these plans are useless. We cannot measure the things that are drawn on these plans because there's nowhere to hook our tape. And I told that to Mark Eng, and the, and the plans I found in a wad in the rain. They had just so frustrated, they just wadded up the whole set of plans, left them in the rain. I told that to Mark Engberg, and he said, bingo. Every junior architect, I spend a lot of time teaching them how a tape measure works. So students are learning great stuff. I think I'm learning good stuff, and I will come back and share what I'm learning.
Well, a special thank you to, to joining us tonight. I mean, this has really been informative, and thank you for the idea as well. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. So you're welcome to stay with us if you want. I think Mike's up next for a couple of issues. But you, like I say, you're welcome to.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
But thank you. Storage units are my thing.
Thank you so much, Nils, I really appreciate it.
You know, it's the, the house that's being built across the street from my house. I'm having a, this is a regeneration for me because for the first time in my life, I can, in my pajamas, walk across the street in the morning and check out the project every day. Boy, let me tell you, the people, the young people that designed this house knew exactly what they're doing. I mean, the, the walls are going up. I mean, the guys are, it's going together like clockwork. You know, in other words, knowing how big a sheet of plywood is, is a really good thing to know. And so I'm, I'm just loving watching these guys put it together because the four walls came up in the last 24 hours. You know, and it's.
Single family?
That's what we don't teach very well in the school of architecture.
So, thanks, Nils. Mike, before you do your presentation, we got the RCS that we need to approve.
Right.
So I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that. This is the RCS for the RV park that we approved two, three meetings ago. So are there any issues, corrections, deletions? So, okay, do we have a motion to approve the RCS?
Motion to approve.
So Victoria, a second?
Second.
Then a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstentions. Okay, great. All right, Mike, thank you. Did you want to also do the self-storage?
Yeah, I was just going to be a quick kind of synopsis, as the last time we spoke. I think it was more or less just queuing this up for a public hearing and maybe one last look before we did that.
Okay.
And just wanted to, if anybody else saw anything, I think last time there was maybe one Scribner's error. I think we got resolved and the addition of fencing around the perimeter. But we included, you know, all those things. And I think as of last time, it was good to go, but just wanted to give the opportunity if there's, somebody saw something else.
I, I didn't, I looked at it and didn't see anything additional. So as far as I'm concerned, we're ready to go unless anybody else has got some.
Sorry, I gotta be the guy. So I, I was looking through and I looked through it pretty fast today. But just by going around, just looking at some of the facilities, and I've been traveling the last three weeks for work. Is there anything included, just for our purposes, where I think over time, they can get a little, like the landscape can get a little tattered with like weeds, et cetera, and become like less desirable? We've definitely shown some of our more shiny ones in the area. But if we look at the ones that are, you know, 10 years old, they're not as well taken care of just because that's, it doesn't need to be. My, my thought is we have something that says they have to be maintained, right? And I'm not suggesting like always go and do a full redesign, but just basic maintenance of just forming weeds on the property, I think is kind of an important thing. Doesn't become nice where, but.
Storage unit HOA.
Does that requirement exist with, for commercial property zonings or anything like that?
Just noxious weeds. So, I mean, that would be the only requirement there. You know, there's a continuing obligation for like the landscaping. So if they're required to put in a certain number of trees and shrubs around the perimeter of a project, you know, and so, you know, maybe have a couple die over the years, they're required to replace those. And so every so often, we'll have somebody go around and look at the original landscape plans and have developers essentially replace the foliage that has died over the years. And so, but other than that, yeah, we have no requirement as to kind of general upkeep other than what exists within our police regulations and kind of general nuisance language in our zoning code.
But it does seem like, I think it's an, I think it's an issue. I'm, I have a relationship to two storage unit groups. And one is just a piece of crap out in the county. And, and one is tied up with apartments that, duh, has to be like the apartment. So you can see there's a difference. And one would wonder, the HOA thing sounds silly, but on the other hand, if these things are going to be built in residential areas, then maybe there is a fee that you pay on top of the rental unit to, for that access. In other words, I've been having a hard time understanding why we're even discussing this sometimes. But we are a bunch of rich people who have a bunch of stuff that we don't know what to do with. And so we use storage units. And I don't know, I just, it's on my mind, the HOA thing's on my mind because I, I spent the 4th of July in Tri-Cities. And one of my young students that lives over there is in a development. Oh my God, you walk around the development, there is no weed anywhere in this development. He, there is an HOA, there is a fee, he pays a fee every month. But I'm walking around the neighborhood and I'm, I walk around Fort Russell and, and there's, some people take care of their yards, some don't. You know, this place, there's 600 houses and every piece of lawn is beautiful. Every edge is trimmed. And I, that seems to relate to the fact that he pays, they pay a $65 a month fee. And you will have a good-looking grass, period.
I don't know that I necessarily disagree with what Drew's bringing up, but how do you codify that? And is, is this the appropriate place to do that? Are there other mechanisms? And are we singling out this type of commercial unit to have a requirement that there aren't with others? So I don't know, I just, I, I mean, I understand what you're getting at and, but I'm not sure that, I think that this is the right place that we, we changed the code or the ordinance to have some language about that. I, I don't know, I mean, I'm.
It's hard to regulate ugly, too.
I mean, I see people working in their yards and it still looks like weed.
Your neighbor across the street is.
Well, yeah.
You're absolutely right, and that's what just shocked me. I've never spent three or four days living in a planned development. I, I was, I was shocked just to walk around the block. And, and I mean, it looked like these people all came out of the same cookie cutter. You know, every, everybody has the same little thing around their tree, a beautiful stone thing. I mean, and it was, it's called Creekside, I think, you know, one of those deals. But I don't know whether that is something, a bridge too far for us.
I, my preference would be to move this thing forward without going back and revisiting how we come up with language. But I'm just one vote, so it kind of second time.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to see a great proliferation of these, frankly, but you're going to have a couple of them in your, in your project?
Don't want to. Nothing at this point?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm, how does everybody else feel about this? I mean, I just.
I don't even know, honestly, I don't know why we were talking about, I'm kind of like him, I just don't get why we were even brought to that.
Why we're doing this at all?
Yeah. Honestly, that's the way I am, but I don't know if there's a deed for it, I don't know if someone knocked on your door and, I don't know.
Well, it's just as we promote this further densification of the city, that, you know, you put people in townhouses and twin homes, and you have rows of these on streets. I mean, people logically have items and things that they can't keep, you know, if you're going to push people into smaller homes.
Well, my thing was there that, the argument was they don't, the argument was to put them in these residential, was that they don't come there that often. So to me, where they're at is fine because they don't come there that often. Again, I just, I don't get it. But I'm, I'm riding the wave and I, I mean, I understand the other side of it, and so.
But we also don't have very much motor business, I mean, we really don't have much motor business. And to be honest, that all the storage units are eating up all our more motor business space. And then we don't have a place for commercial stuff to go up. I mean, putting a whole bunch of storage units next to the police station, is that, is that what you want?
That's better there than where I'm at.
Well, so let's get back down to the basic, are we going to move this thing forward for a public hearing? Or do we have some more work that needs to be done? I, like I said, I'm, I'm ready to move it forward, but let's, let's hear from.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I'm, I'm ready to move it forward, too. I think that if we run into issues, we can certainly look at it down the road in six or eight years.
Well, we may get something out of the hearing where we see something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
When you get some, if, if we get residents to show up and if they have, you know, some points, then.
Okay.
I'd be willing to have it go to hearing, yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's, and I, you know, Drew, I don't mean to be unmindful of your concern, I.
I know it's, I'm not trying to be unreasonable, but I mean, if, but it's.
Well, it's like Victoria says, maybe something will come out of the public hearing. So let's, let's get it on the, on the schedule and we'll move forward and see what, what we have. Okay, all right, so we're, we're okay with, with that then. So Mike, I guess the last item here is the buffer yard requirement update.
Yeah, hopefully this topic will be a little more interesting than you found self-storage facilities, but.
I don't know, it's like.
So this is something that has been in the zoning code, you know, looking back at prior zoning codes, we've always had this buffer yard requirements. And this is really buffer yards that are intended to separate different zones. So you maybe have a commercial zone adjacent to a residential zone. It helps provide kind of more compatibility and less nuisance issues when you have landscape separation between those, those zones. And I don't know that we've updated the, we got a couple figures in the code, and I don't know if we've updated those. I mean, I think I can see those back probably 30, 40 years in other zoning codes. And so it's really outdated. It's much like our parking lot landscaping that we, you know, parking lot standards that we updated a few years ago. And just updating a lot of things, like instead of, you know, planting height upon putting the plant in the ground, it's kind of gone to just gallon size, you know. It's kind of what those standards are when you go and buy it at the store, are a little bit different as far as the industry standard. So we go through kind of a purpose section at the beginning, just saying that providing visual buffer between the uses of different intensity, reduce erosion, stormwater runoff, protect property values, eliminate potential land use conflicts by mitigating adverse impacts from dust, odor, litter, noise, glare, light, signs, buildings, or parking areas. And then it just pretty much states that they need to provide in accordance with provisions of this section, whenever any use, development or modification of use or developments being reviewed underneath the zoning code. We have this table, so it refers to Table 1, which is in the zoning code. And then we'll go through, it's kind of a matrix. And then it goes through some figures, there's three different standards, A, B, and C, buffer yards. And there's also a figure that goes along with that. This is the Table 1, and it's just a matrix. So you have the, up at the top, zone of the proposed use. We go through all, pretty much all the zoning districts. And then you would go down for the proposed use, and then the adjacent property, that zone is on the left-hand side there. So if it was in the R4 zone where the proposed use is being located, you would go down to another zone. Obviously, if it's in another residential area, there wouldn't be a, a buffer yard that's required. But once you start getting down into the commercial zone, so RTO, central business, general business, the intensity of buffer, depending upon the intensity of zone, increases. And there are some issues, I mean, we have a blank column there. I guess maybe that's, I've looked at it for 14 years, but that's probably the first time I've ever noticed that we have this. Oops. Got this blank column there. And then neighborhood business is the zone, but in the, the table, we refer to it as BN, which is business neighborhood, I believe, is, is what may be a prior zone. is, is what may be a prior zone. So, it just really talks to the, the date of when this, this matrix was probably created, which was quite a while ago. So, looking at updating, you know, maybe going through and, and updating, uh, some of the zones and just making sure that, uh, those make sense. So, this is Type A buffer. So, it's 12 feet wide, allows you to reduce it to 10 feet with irrigation. Uh, so it's pretty hard to see the number of plantings in there. It looks like it's been photocopied over the years. So, really, every 100 lineal feet, you're required to put two canopy trees, four understory trees, and six shrubs in that area. Um, don't, doesn't really say anything about, uh, spacing those out or kind of at an equal intensity. Uh, so probably want to clarify that, but really just wanted to update these drawings, provide something a little bit more clear and useful for people. Uh, Type B buffer yard, so a little more intense here. There's four canopy trees, six understory, and eight shrubs that are required as part of this. A little bit wider, but still, wider, but still allows you to reduce it to 10 feet if you have irrigation. And then the most intense, uh, Type C. So, there are two canopy trees, three understory, and 12 shrubs, but this does include a, a fence that I think has to be at least six feet in height there. And this is usually only shows up when, uh, you're in an industrial zone adjacent to maybe a residential zone. Uh, there was a requirement there. So, goes through a location section, pretty much just talks about it needs to be adjacent to the property line, unless there can be a demonstration by the applicant that it pretty much has an equivalent, uh, buffering in another location, uh, which is hard to kind of visualize. I don't know that we've ever had that in, in one of these. It's usually just adjacent to the property line. And then they can't be provided any portion of the public or private street right-of-way or vision triangle. So, this is what I was referring to earlier. So, looking at specifies minimum plant size. So, we're still at really a one and a half inch caliper for the trees. Uh, understory would likely just be another inch and a half caliper as well, but they specify four feet in height here. And then the shrubs, deciduous, evergreen, and, uh, that'd be it. But they have a, a specified height for those. And those have just been, you know, we've moved away from that. Now, it's just number of gallons upon planting, depend, depending upon what the species is. And then evergreen trees, three feet in height. Again, we, we'd likely go to a, a caliper size on this. So, really just mimicking what we've done already in the parking lot standards as far as the landscaping there. So, I'd like to update that. We have a statement here, talks about utilization of existing vegetation. So, if you have existing trees that you're able to protect on the property, you can certainly use those as part of the, the buffer requirements. Fences and berms. So, this section really just, um, specifies what the, the six-foot tall fence is. So, like in the C buffer yard, uh, it needs to be solid, view obscuring, constructed of natural materials in our masonry, and be at least six feet in height. And then it also provides for the opportunity, if a landscape berm is introduced, so a three-foot tall landscape berm is provided in the B buffer yard, you're able to use the plantings of the A buffer yard to satisfy the buffer requirement. So, it just allows some flexibility there as far as a berm. I haven't seen too many berms, but I have an example. Um, and we'll kind of talk a little bit about that in a couple slides here. So, if landscape berm of at least three feet in height is provided in a C, fencing shall be required. So, the six-foot tall fence to three-foot tall berm. Then there's a provision, if there's zones that are separated, so take for instance, like A Street, you have a property that may be zoned, neighborhood business, and then to the north, it's residential, R4. Uh, if it's separated by an arterial street, then you're allowed, allowed to reduce the buffer yard requirement. So, if there's a C normally required, then you reduce it to B. B's normally required, you can reduce it to A. Uh, what we've always found unique is that, well, if you have an A buffer yard and it's, you know, there's a arterial that's separating that, that's pretty much just remains an A buffer yard. And so, maybe there's an opportunity there to reduce the, of that, maybe we just go to a standard parking lot buffer that's three feet in width, um, instead of 10 feet there. And so, um, I, you know, there's a number of projects that have, uh, you know, they haven't really been that incompatible with what's across the street. And so, just the opportunity to reduce that width, uh, if you're in an A buffer yard, to something a little bit less, I think would be beneficial there. And then just a requirement that you have a buffer yard plan as part of the, uh, part of the project. So, I got a couple examples of other issues that we've run into. So, this is Troy Highway. Um, this is the animal clinic and hospital property here. Across the highway there to the south, you have, um, RV dealership essentially, that's selling, uh, they also have some sheds for sale as well. Uh, Paradise Path, kind of stuck on this thing here. I don't know exactly how to get it without going up to the podium, but, um, we got, yeah, Paradise Path here. And Paradise Creek, you know, that goes through in the south end of the highway as well. So, you look at the zoning configuration of the area. So, animal clinics, residential office, you have other residential zones to the north, east, and to the west. So, R4, R3. And then across Troy Road is Motor Business, is, is the light blue. So, you have a pretty intense, uh, zone, but it's kind of at a unique angle. I mean, we got this weird thing here, which really isn't part of the property. I mean, this is all ITD right-of-way here. And then this is just included, and it's probably in, in some type of air as far, maybe the property owner does own that, but it's undevelopable just because it's, it's essentially Paradise Creek. And so, you look at the, the zones, potential office to Motor Business, and there's some type of buffer yard that's required. I think it's probably Type A. But in reality, what you have across the street is farm ranch type of designation. You know, really, it maybe should be extended up here as far as farm ranch, just to accommodate the path and, and the creek there. And so, you know, looking at this and, and seeing these scenarios, I think it'd be nice to include a little bit of flexibility as far as uses and then adjacent uses and circumstances where the zone might not necessarily fit what's on the ground there and may never fit that. And so, here's another example, the MZ property, a whole former St. John Hardware site. And so, they ended up developing, apologize, this is an older photo, but, uh, the northern portion, so pretty much the northern half of this property, uh, didn't want to go through a rezone, or they didn't need to at the time. So, looking at the zone configuration, it's zone industrial. Uh, and it's pretty much just a remnant of, you know, pretty much recognizing that it was St. John Hardware and other industrial railroad uses over the years. Uh, we have a comp plan goal to transition this industrial to the south, in which we've been somewhat successful as far as transitioning some of this industrial from the core of the city to the south. But nonetheless, it's a remnant zone, industrial. It doesn't really reflect what the professional office, you know, tech office that they ended up constructing there. But they didn't need to go through the rezone, so they didn't go through the, the rezone. So, regardless of that, now they're stuck with a buffer yard requirement essentially on all sides, even adjacent to Motor Business, they were required to have a buffer yard because normally you think of industrial as just so intense of a use, uh, that it needs to be buffered from everything. And so, what you ended up with on the west side was they didn't want to, I mean, think of a requirement, so it'd be a Type C buffer here. So, the six-foot tall fence would be technically required all along that, that western edge. And so, you know, you have R4 across the street, and they're all residential houses, apartments, duplexes. Um, but you'd be looking at a six-foot tall fence right up against the sidewalk, that entire edge, you know? And, and, you know, maybe you have headlights at certain points in time, but it's, it's, most of the time, they're not going to be frequenting the office at nighttime hours. So, you're not going to have that issue as far as headlights glaring into, uh, those houses. So, they didn't want to construct the six-foot tall fence. We didn't want them to construct the fence. And so, they ended up opting for the berm instead. And so, this is one of the few circumstances where they chose to do the three-foot berm to not do the fence and then did the rest of the plantings required. Size was three-foot berm and then maybe additional plantings, uh, in lieu of, of the fence there. And so
Question?
Yeah.
So, the three-foot berm, is that intended to therefore block headlights? Is that why?
I think, yeah, partially. I think it's noise, headlights, uh, more of a, a little bit of a visual block. And so, I, yeah, I think that that, that's part of it.
Because three feet versus a six-foot fence, there's
Sure, sure. But you can see, I mean, I, I bet the majority of those headlights are
That's what I, that's what I
Mostly blocked by that, except for the larger trucks and SUVs there. But you think of an industrial use, you know, it could potentially be operating hours a day. At this type of business use, you're not going to have people in there in the nighttime. Very, very, you know, infrequent that you would have that.
It's gonna look a little different with the landscaping, then it's
So, then on the north side, uh, they were adjacent, I believe, Motor Business. So, it was just a Type A buffer. So, this is, instead of the typical type, uh, typical three-foot buffer that you'd have in parking lots, it was a little bit wider. So, it ate up a little bit more, you know, area in this, in this location of the lot. But then, you know, we really made an exception in this area because, I mean, it's right up against, uh, the couplet there. It's more of an urban feel. I mean, it's transitioning to downtown. You wouldn't want a 10-foot buffer between the sidewalk and the building in this location. And it's a four-story, more urban building in the core of town. And, and so, it made sense to, to not have a buffer in this location. So, those are kind of just examples of things that I think we need to include some type of flexibility and being able to do some alternative means within the, the landscaping. And, I mean, these are just a couple of examples, but over the years, there've been quite a few examples, uh, just issues that we've run into and kind of lack of flexibility, kind of forcing us to make kind of these compromises and, and alternative determinations to be able to allow it. So, um, yeah. And so, just really introducing this as maybe a potential code amendment to, to look at revising.
Okay. So, you'll kind of be working on this and then bring it back to us again with the, with the update. So, okay. Any questions?
Do you get the zero scape or wisecape, uh, people to look at this? I mean, is there some reason to think about plants in slightly a different way than we typically always thought of, thought of them? I, I don't know. It seemed like the, it might be different plants that, uh, take less, take less water or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, we, we looked at it pretty extensively with the parking lot landscaping. And so, I mean, usually you just have the, the primary species, deciduous, evergreen. Um, and there's just a wide variety. I mean, all this year escaping would fit within
Yeah, it's a shrub that probably that falls in that
Yeah. But that's what comes into play as far as, you know, specifying the height before. You're kind of locked into a certain species once you specify. And you, you know, once we went to the gallon size, allows a lot more flexibility, like the ground cover type vegetation that spreads out, like you see at, uh, City Hall here, you know, like Third, Third and Washington here is kind of a good example.
I can't remember far enough. I mean, I was on that parking thing. So, so were you. Didn't we make some comment in there to encourage wisecaping?
I believe so, yeah.
I think we did. So, we called attention to it
Yeah.
So that when they look at it, they go, oh, wisecaping.
And the other thing I'd note, I know it's an action item, but I was gonna mention, I think if we're granted as a B city, one thing that David Schott was working with Parks and Rec on, with that comes some help to be able to designate and identify suggested native plants. And so, I think there's some existing resources that we can kind of hopefully employ people to. I was gonna ask as far as the irrigation thing, because I know setbacks different, there's irrigation system in place, which I guess makes sense because ideally that, in some cases, a sprinkler system in a buffer zone is gonna help reduce water consumption and increase efficiency by having it there. But I don't know if there's something to be said about wisecape incentives or
But even if it's, yeah, even if it's wisecape, most people just have drip irrigation.
Right. So, you're not even seeing that much water in some kind of, you're not even seeing
Usually it's just to get it established for three years.
Yeah, once they're established, they're pretty good. But they, yeah. Okay, so you'll
continue the, the march on that. And, okay, next item, Joel, uh, Transportation Commission report?
Transportation Commission would normally meet, uh, tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, and that meeting has been canceled.
Ah, okay. So, maybe
End of report.
Mike, what do we have potential on the agenda for the 27th meeting?
We have a public hearing.
We do?
Yep, have a public hearing and then a final plat review.
Okay. All right. So, we will definitely be having the July 27th meeting. So, um, that was all on the agenda. Welcome back, Neil. Is there anything else that anybody has for the good of the order? If not, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.